All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council Committee of the Hall for the City of Belvidere of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry, Flurry absent. Frank?
Here.
Freeman, Freeman absent. Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mulhall, Mulhall absent. Peterson?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Seven present?
Okay, thank you, Erica. We don't have any public comment this evening. We have no public forum. We'll flip the page. Reports of officers' boards and special committees. Number one, building, planning, zoning unfinished business, we have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning, new business, building department update. Good evening, Director Countryman.
Good evening, Mayor. For the month of March, we issued fifty-three permits for a value of construction just under thirty-one and a half million dollars. Twelve of those were commercial, forty-one residential. Some projects going on in town. There's a paint booth out at seven-seven-five Logistics. That's a Piranha Company that relocated from Rockford. Warehouse renovation at twelve-twenty-two Crosslink, which is one of the outlets from Stellantis that has since been purchased and redeveloped. Truck maintenance building at fifteen-fourty-four Crosslink, and EV charging station at sixteen-ten North State. For property maintenance, we've closed seventeen cases in the month of March. We have seven in progress and three ticketed. And I'll answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Director Countryman, any questions? Feel free to ask anybody on the council. If there's any questions, I'll be the touch. Okay, hearing none. Item B, building independent contractor agreement for plumbing inspection services. In your packet is an agreement that shows the contract we have for the independent contractor for plumbing inspector. Director Countryman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
This is annually, or for, we contracted a plumbing, independent plumbing contractor a couple of years ago. He's a licensed retired plumber, and I think we're doing a little housekeeping, getting the contracts signed with the guys. So the liability is not with the city, that they understand they are independent contractors. The second one is the agreement for the electrical inspector, so I need a motion for each of the contracts to be approved.
Right, so first, I'd ask for a motion to forward to City Council resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement for plumbing inspection services. If I could have that, if I could have that motion, motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. As Director Countryman had said, we have done this in-house with an independent, and it seems to have worked well, I guess, unless you think otherwise. Kip, but I think it has worked well.
Yeah, Gail's been... Permits and stuff arise. John and Gail are real good about communication and letting the permit applicants know this is what, this is what the minimum requirements are, and we don't, we don't have a lot of heartache, a lot of heartburn with it, excuse me, a lot of heartburn. So they're really good guys, and yeah, we just, like I said, we need to annually do this contract for these guys.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, we have a motion on the floor regarding the independent contractor being for the plumbing inspection services. If there are no other questions or comments, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, okay, motion passed, thank you. And then as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kip, as well, for the building independent contractor agreement for electrical inspection services. The same things, thing applies. As Director Countryman said, I think we've had a variety of, of construction projects the last four years. As the council's well aware, we've had big, certainly big developments come here and then, and then small, but we've been able to do this out of savings for the taxpayers, and yet we control, we were able to control that and in-house. So I think that's a, that's a good idea. If I could have a motion to forward to the City Council a resolution also authorizing the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement for electrical inspection services. I'd appreciate it. Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you, and a second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that? It's pretty much same boilerplate, but it does work well in-house. If there's any question, I'm sure Director Countryman will answer it. Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Kip, did I miss something? Is this, is this the first year that we've done this as independent contractors, or is this a continuation?
It's a continuation, like I said, as house cleaning. And I would add that the plumbing inspector, he's licensed with the state. With my certifications, I don't have any jurisdiction over the state's health requirements and things like that, so it is good that we have an independent contractor to do the work for the state. We, you can hire this, or add the state as a inspector, but they have two that cover from the edge of Cook County all the way out to the Mississippi River. So they can't cover the ground, so it's a blessing having John as coverage for this, for the city. The state does handle the county, but he notified me a couple of years ago that our, our workload's getting too big. You guys got it, you got too much going on in the city. You gotta get an independent contractor. Yeah, it's an annual thing that just kind of rolls over. We're just, like I said, we're doing a little housekeeping here, and I wanted to present this to you guys, just so you're aware of what's kind of going on.
Alderman Peterson?
I think the electrical, the electrical contractor has been doing this for a little bit longer than what, than what John A.D. has, right, or not?
We've been actually using independent contractors for both since the early two thousands. There was a period, as Kip was talking about with plumbing, where we went to the state instead because the former plumbing inspector head was not only able to do it, and the state was willing to do it for free, but they can't do it anymore. But we've been doing independent contractors since two thousand three, two thousand four timeframe.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And item D, planning department update. Good evening, Ms. Ellos.
Good evening. March was pretty low on cases, which is standard. No one thinks to get their zoning in place until the weather breaks and they want to start getting the ground moving. So, but we did have a public hearing for video gaming on Buchanan Street. That will be before the council next week. And then for April, we have one case for the daycare center on Pearl Street, which voided out due to timing issues, so they are reapplying. So that is good, 'cause we need daycares. Site plans, like Kip said, it's the truck repair facility on Morium Drive, some downtown overlay reviews. There should be some more facade improvements happening, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, which will be great to see. Historic Preservation is working on their fundraising for the summer. They did release an edition of their newsletter, which is on their Facebook page, and we have a meeting this Thursday, kind of just a open house networking for historic property owners. I'm working on Heritage Day stuff, getting contracts in place. That's an ongoing process. And the banner program, all the banner spaces are sold out. We're just waiting for the final proofs, and then we'll go on to the installation phase.
So, you know, the banners, I think, has been, they have been a quicker sellout than what anybody would have imagined. I certainly didn't think so, but as the council remembers, we had the examples up here hanging off the, hanging off the duck work that's covered up. And so I think, I think they went well. And so thank you, Gina, as well. If there are no other questions for Gina, we'll just move on. Appreciate it. Item three, public works unfinished business, we have none. Item four, public works new business. Item A, public works department update. Director Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. At your desk tonight, there, you'll see the rate survey that we've received from the City of Genoa that they do on an annual basis. And I'm happy to report that, again, if you look at the highlighted column there for average monthly bill for water and sewer, we rank at the last of the, of everybody for, for unit costs. So again, we're very reasonable with our rates, even including these last few rate increases that we did in the past twelve months. Our average bill is forty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, and the overall average for the communities surveyed was seventy-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. So we are substantially below, below average. So that speaks volumes for our capabilities, and hopefully there's a bottling plant or, or some operation out there that's looking for a lot of water, 'cause we have a lot of water available at a reasonable rate. So, and that's the only update I have for you guys.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Director Anderson, because I think that does put it into perspective. I don't want to say, I want to say frugal, how frugal you've been and how frugal we've been with water rates, and they are the best in the area. And they have been for, for quite some time, and it looks like it's not even close. So, thank you. Item B, twenty-twenty-five mowing program bid tabulation. In your packet is a memo dated four-one of this year from Director Anderson regarding the twenty-twenty-five mowing program bid tabulations that we'd received. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. A memo in your packet, we received two bids from Langton Group and Lawn Care by Walter. Both of these companies have worked, have done this work for us in the past. First thing you're going to notice is the, the extremely low amount on the water. They, there was an error in their calculation, so we contacted them, gave them the option of withdrawing their bids, and they said, no, we, we would live with that. We would rather have the, our prices approved for the overall contract. So with that being said, there's three motions I will need for this according to the memo. First one will be the approval of a little bit from Langton Group and the amount of eighty-seven dollars per mowing for the mowing of the water department sites, and they'll be paid for from water department line item sixty-one-five-eight-ten-sixty-forty.
Okay. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both. Any questions, any comments, any concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed. And Director Anderson, item two?
Item two is the approval of a little bit from Langton Group and the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and forty cents per mowing for the mowing of the public work sites, paid for from street department line item zero-one-five-three-ten-six-zero-zero-two.
All right, we have that out of request, out of Public Works. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And then the third one?
The last one will be the approval of a little bit from Langton Group and the amount of three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents per mowing for the Farmington Ponds. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
All right, if I could have that motion out of committee, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both. Any questions regarding that motion, feel free to ask. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And we'll move to item C, which is twenty-twenty-five landscape maintenance bid tabulation. In your packet, again, is a memo from Director Anderson dated four-one of twenty-five. Director Anderson?
Again, we received two bids for this work. Both contractors have done this work for us in the past. I would recommend approval of a little bit from Lawn Maintenance Services and the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars for the twenty-twenty-five landscape maintenance program. The work will be paid for from street department line item zero-one-five-three-ten-six-thousand-two and zero-one-five-three-ten-sixty-eight-twenty-six. This includes primarily the downtown streetscape area, also includes our entry signs. I think there's five of them around town that they do, as well as a few other spots as well.
All right, if, if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions regarding the low bid? Motion on the floor, feel free to ask. Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Director Anderson, are these, is Lawn Maintenance Services been involved in the past with winning these contracts? Are they a historical supplier?
Yes, both of the contractors that placed bids have done this work for us in the past. Lawn Maintenance is the one that's had, is our current one. The previous year is who did it.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. If there's any other questions, feel free to ask. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And item four-D, which is twenty-twenty-five tree program bid tabulation. In your packet, once again, a memo dated four-one of twenty-five regarding the twenty-twenty-five program bid tabulation. Director Anderson?
Again, we received two bids for this work also. Again, both contractors have had this contract in the years past. I would recommend approval of a little bit from Minahan's Tree Service in the amount of fifty-six thousand for tree work from May first, twenty-twenty-five, to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six for the City of Belvidere.
All right, if I could have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions, any comments regarding the low bid motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And item E, a memo in your packet, again, from Director Anderson dated four-one of twenty-five regarding the twenty-twenty-five sidewalk replacement program bid tabulation. And this one, Director Anderson?
Thank you. As it states in the memo, we only received the, the one bid, and it was a quite, a quite high bid, to say the least, and therefore we would recommend that the twenty-twenty-five sidewalk replacement bid received be rejected, and we will rebid this at a future date. We'll probably put the bids back out, again, back in May, end of April, so we can have it back for, for May's committee meeting, hopefully. But we're going to make some tweaks to the bid documents, and then hopefully do a better job of, of gathering some interest from contractors to, to give us bids. So I think if we rebid it, we'll, we'll come out better than what we're at right now.
Well, I certainly hope so, because that was outlandish bid, and the only one we got, so I think it's wise to see if we can't go back and try and get some more interest in it. I think it is important to point out that concrete's won up, concrete's won up a lot. And any of the concrete work that we do, including sidewalk replacement program, just the annual, as you can see, this really wouldn't get us very much for our money. And that would be too bad, but I think we will get another estimate, and we'll come back to the council. Very expensive. It's very expensive to maintain sidewalks and, you know, but we'll, we'll come back, and I think we'll do better. So, all right, and item F?
We get a motion to reject the bid.
You need, you want a motion? Any affirmative, or?
Motion to reject the bids.
Okay, all right. Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. We have a motion then on the floor for the, for the reasons given to reject the bid from Alliance Contractors, Inc. If there's any comments, any questions, certainly ask. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. All right, motion passed. We'll see how it goes. Item F, item four-F in your packet, tornado sirens, twenty-twenty-five maintenance agreement from Braniff Communications. In your packet dated four-four of twenty-five, from Director Anderson is tornado sirens maintenance agreement, twenty-twenty-five maintenance agreement with Braniff Communications. Director Anderson, that did go up a little bit, but probably not any more than cost of living, pretty, pretty close, so.
Correct, yes. We, their cost this year proposed is six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars for the, for the nine sirens for the year. I would recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-five outdoor warning sirens system manual preventive maintenance agreement with Braniff Communications, the amount of six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. This work will be paid for from line item zero-one-five-two-forty-seventy-nine-hundred.
All right. If I could have that motion, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Braniff always has done this, haven't they? They're the ones who have done this every, every year for many, many years.
From design to installation to maintenance, correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have that motion on the floor. If there's any questions regarding the motion, please feel free to ask. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And in your item G, purchase of a stump grinder for the street department. In your packet is a memo dated April ninth, twenty-five, from Director Anderson regarding this purchase. Director Anderson?
Thanks again, Your Honor. The street department's fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget includes sixty-five thousand dollars for a stump grinder. Until now, stump grinding work was done by contract, but we believe that doing our own stump grinding will be more efficient and economical for our residents. We received two proposals for a new, new, I'm sorry, there's a typo there, a new stump grinder, first from Vermeer Midwest in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-four cents, second from Bobcat of Janesville for a Bandit, twenty-five fifty track. These are both track machines at sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I would recommend the purchase of the Vermeer SC forty-eight TX stump grinder from Vermeer Midwest in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-four cents. The equipment will be paid for from Capitol line item forty-one-five-seven-fifty-two-eight-two-hundred.
All right, if I could have that motion. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions? Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Brent, is this work going to be separate, then, from what Minahan's is going to do with, with respect to tree removal? Do they not, not do any stump removal, and that's our bailiwick, or?
Yes, so when we put the bids out this year, it was in anticipation that we would be doing our own stump removal, so that was taken out of the bid package for that, which would explain why the bids were at fifty-five in the fifty thousand dollar range as opposed to what they have been previously. So, yes, so the intent was that we would be doing it ourselves. And, and probably the biggest, the biggest benefit, it's going to be cost-effective, I believe, long run also, but the biggest benefit is timing. We've been struggling for the last several years with, no matter who our tree contractor was, getting them in there. They were real good about taking a tree down. They were real not so good about coming back and taking care of the stump. And so we were always fielding calls and stuff, when they come, and when they come, and what's going on. So now that, hopefully the council agrees, and we get this equipment in-house, then we'll be able to respond to it. As soon as they're down, we'll be there to take the stumps out and get everything restoration completed. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you. As Director Anderson said, a lot of times, they take the tree, and then if they don't take the stump, sometimes some of the big trees in the terrace have decimated the sidewalk, even to the point where they're heaved so bad that you can barely, you know, you can barely utilize them. So in that respect, we have waited and haven't had a lot of success in waiting, but I thought it would be wise to go ahead and get our own, and then we can do it in-house, and we can do it without waiting a lot of times, and then we can also seasonally take care of any of the sidewalk work that may need to follow. So, Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, I just have a couple of questions. Because it's, they're going to, it's going to be used in a residential area, what's the noise level?
I'd probably compare it to like a snow blower grinding or a chainsaw. And then this will have, it comes with shrouds to protect the area, to protect the site, too, from the flying debris and so forth. That'll set up as part of the operation.
Thank you. And also, does the price include the options?
It includes the stuff listed. When you say options, the remote control extended, the preventive maintenance is not included, standard warranty on the machine. It does come with the remote control, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion for the purchase of the stump grinder at, for the low bidder, Vermeer Midwest, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, okay, motion passed, thank you. And then in, in your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated four nine of twenty-five.
If you want, we can do the.
I'm sorry.
The mulching, we can do the mulching attachment first because the funding for the trailers is a result of, if the council agrees with purchasing of the two.
Yeah.
So if we want to jump to aye.
Okay. So in your packet is a memo dated four nine of twenty-five, which is a purchase of a brush mulching attachment for the street department. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. So memo states, the street department's fiscal year 26 budget includes thirty thousand dollars for a brush mulching attachment. This attachment will be used on our Volvo Mini excavator and it will allow the Public Works Department to more efficiently maintain our landfills, rights of ways and easements for sanitary sewers, water mains and storm sewers. We've received two, two proposals for a Fecan FM twenty-eight mulching attachment. Alta Equipment Company, twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Bobcat of Rockford, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. I would recommend the purchase of the Fecan FM twenty-eight EXC brush mulching attachment from Alta Equipment Company in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. The equipment will be paid for from capital line item forty-one five, seven fifty-two, eighty-two hundred. Attached to the memo is a picture of what the Fecan, what the forestry attachment, the mulching attachment looks like, what it does. And again, it will help us tremendously as our, we maintain all of our, the landfill, the two landfills that we have to work on. Our, our storm sewer, drainage ditches, Appleton Road drainage ditch. We've got three or four other ones, main ones. We've got sanitary sewer easements and some sanitary sewer lines where you can't even get through anymore because it's all overgrown. This attachment will let us knock this stuff down and keep it down and keep it maintainable.
All right, if I could have a motion in support of that. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Peterson. Thank you both. Any questions? I think it's, Brent, you point out that to keep the brush on the low flow channel, to keep, keep that stuff, that be instrumental with that then?
Correct. And six street low flow channel, we've got, we've got storm, storm drainage ways out in Moray Sub. We've got some more, like said, Appleton Road, for example. There's some more out there and detention areas and stuff that we have to maintain. And this tool will be invaluable to help us do that.
Well, I would agree with you there because that seems to overgrow rapidly and that'll be a good thing. All right, if there's any questions, any comments for Brent, feel free to ask regarding this motion. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? All right, motion passed, thank you. And item J, Water Systems?
Back to H.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Purchase of the trailer for the stump grinder in your packet is item H?
Thank you, Your Honor. So with the, with the purchase of the two pieces of equipment that was included in the budget, we've got a remaining balance there of eight thousand two hundred and nine dollars and sixteen cents. We need a dedicated trailer for the stump grinder to be as, as efficient as we can in getting that work completed. We've received two proposals for such a trailer. Rondo Enterprises, Vermeer Midwest. Just note on the Rondo Enterprises, the five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars is for the trailer. There's an additional ninety-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents for the title and plates for that trailer. So the new total is five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. And I would recommend the purchase of the PJ tilt trailer from Rondo Enterprises in that amount. And the equipment, this equipment will be paid for from capital line item forty-one five, seven fifty-two, eighty-two hundred.
All right. If I could have a motion that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Peterson. Thank you both. All right, any questions regarding that and feel free to ask? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, did you check with Hammer Time as well?
We checked Hammer Time. I don't know if we checked with them or not. I'd have to, I'd have to check with the superintendent, see if we did.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. If there's any other questions or discussion, feel free. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have item J, four J, Water System Study and Model Update. In your packet is a memo dated from four eight of twenty-five from Director Anderson. Director Anderson?
Thanks again, Your Honor. The water department's fiscal year 26 budget includes forty-one thousand five hundred dollars for updating our water system study and water model, which was last updated in two thousand and nine. Attached to this memo is proposal from Strain Associates to complete the update in an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The update will include the many changes to our water system since two thousand and nine, including but not limited to wells three and four being taken offline and the construction of well number ten and well number eleven. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Strain Associates in an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand five hundred dollars to complete the water system study and model update. This work will be paid for from water depreciation line item sixty-one dash seventeen eighty.
Okay. If I could have a motion? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Any questions, any comments? Price of doing business and time is up for this, so if there's any questions about the motion, feel free to ask, but. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item K, ten, four K, ten yard dump truck purchase for the water department. In your packet is a memo dated four nine of twenty-five regarding this purchase. Director Anderson?
Again, according to memo in the packet, our water budget includes two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of a new ten yard dump truck. And we received the following proposals for the chassis. Truck Country of Illinois, twenty twenty-six Freightliner, one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Another one from Lakeside International for a twenty twenty-six International for a hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. And one from CIT Trucks for a twenty twenty-six Mack at a hundred and fifty-nine thousand fifty-one dollars. The current delivery of a new order Freightliner chassis is approximately sixty days from the date of order, which is, which is quite good considering how the market's been lately. And we will have proposals for outfitting the chassis, including the dump box, snowplow and spreader on our next committee and hopefully at our May committee meeting. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Truck Country of Illinois in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Freightliner ten year dump truck chassis. The truck chassis will be paid for from water depreciation line item sixty-one seventeen eighty.
All right, if I could have a motion that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that? Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Director Anderson, any guess on what the, the dump box, snowplow and spreader will, will take out of the rest of that two hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Probably the majority of it. The one thing we've got going for it, I guess, in this one is we're not, we're not putting a wing plow on it because it is for the water department. So in the wintertime and stuff, it'll be used on main breaks and so forth. So we want to keep the wing out to keep the width and the maneuverability as best we can. So it'll be a little bit less, but I would expect the majority of that cost will be taken up by it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, just one more question. How many snowplows would we have in total then, once you get this one outfitted?
Without looking at the books, we gotta have, let's see, we've got twenty-six, so fifteen, ten yards. Yeah, we probably got twelve, twelve, thirteen of them. I'd have to check the list to make sure.
And not only Director Anderson is this the lowest bid, but it's also the one that will probably be the most, the quickest on delivery, right? So. Which is, that's a good thing, especially now, so. If there's any other questions, feel free to ask regarding the motion on the floor for the low bid. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item four L, Sidewalk Waiver for Belvidere Retail Subdivision. In your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated four nine for this waiver for the Belvidere Retail Subdivision. And Director Anderson and I had went over this and I thought it was interesting because before this was laid out, I guess maybe I thought this was a good idea, but in retrospect for public safety, I don't believe it is. Director Anderson?
Thanks, Your Honor. According to memo in your packet, the Hydrant Properties, who is the developer of the Belvidere Retail Subdivision, has requested a waiver to allow sidewalk to be placed on only one side of Crystal Parkway as shown on the attached sidewalk plan. And the reasons for this waiver request are as follows. One, to create a safer pedestrian route along Crystal Parkway by not having pedestrians cross the existing truck entrance and truck exit at the diesel fueling area. Two, to accommodate ADA compliant paths at existing entrances along Crystal Parkway. And three, the planned sidewalk alignment provides safe and convenient accessibility to all users within the development and the connectivity to the adjacent roadways. The developer will also provide a plan of easement for the proposed sidewalk along lot three, which will be located outside of the Crystal Parkway right of way due to geometric and grading constraints. If you look on the attached map and the, the path is highlighted in the yellow. So our subdivision standard requires sidewalk adjacent to, to all right of ways on both sides. It does provide for consideration of waiving that requirement for potential conflicts, especially in, more in the industrial zoning districts and so forth. But in this case, you can see the path highlighted in yellow, the, which is the truck stop on the south side of the road. On the north side is the cannabis dispensary and other proposed retail to the north, as well as the future, what's been identified as a possible hotel motel site behind that. And the sidewalk is adjacent to those areas. The lot three they're referencing is on the front corner there where you'll see it's an offset, what appears to be an offset a little bit farther back. And like I said, they will be providing an easement for that. And there will be, eventually there will be sidewalk along Genoa Road and, and IDOT as part of their US Route twenty improvement plans for this next phase, third phase that goes around basically the, the E-buy alignment. They will be having sidewalks and stuff installed from twenty to Logan as well. So this sidewalk that's connected here that's shown on this plan will, will extend on Genoa Road up to twenty. So there will be a path network theoretically. Somebody from White Cliff or, or Big Thunder or any of the subdivisions there could get out on the bypass and go by path end or sidewalk and get down to the retail, the Walmart shopping area and so forth when it is finished. So in that regard, I would recommend approval of the waiver request from Hydrant Properties to offer the installation of sidewalk along one side of Crystal Parkway as shown on the attached sidewalk plan.
All right, if I could have a motion, please. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And a second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor and the comments that are in the, in Director Anderson's memo? Alderman Peterson?
Mayor, I would comment that on the south side of Crystal Parkway, a lot of that is, is asphalt anyhow. It already has a hard surface. I mean, theoretically, it's not a bad walking surface, even just as it, I mean, dodging traffic, obviously, but at least you're not walking across a bunch of turf, I think.
Correct. And that's, it's one of the reasons why they didn't want to put sidewalk on that site is, is again, the increased truck traffic specifically in that area and the number of entrances in and out of the, the truck stop convenience center along that route as well. And you'll notice as you go to the west, there's a cross, there's a road crossing at the very end and that's for ultimately to be extended further west, depending on how that last lot develops that's not been identified yet as to, for a user and so forth. So depending on how that develops and the sidewalk would be extended all the way over the trip.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it does allow to keep pedestrians, the walkway away from what, they have, I think, around eighty semi parking stalls at Speed Trek. And certainly when they come out of there, it might not be a good idea to put them on a sidewalk if we don't have to. And in this case, this solves that, so. We have a motion on the floor. If there's any other questions, feel free to ask. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And four M, Brownfield Proposal for Landfill Two Annual Services. In your packet again from Director Anderson is a memo dated four nine of twenty-five regarding the Brownfield Proposal for Landmark Two Annual Services. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last but not least on my list is the memo in your packet is a proposal from Brownfield Environmental Engineering Resources for their annual services for landfill number two. They will include the statistical evaluation of monitoring well data, data analysis, groundwater assessment, preparation of the corrective action evaluation report, air remission port, as well as operation maintenance of the Leach Eight landfill gas recovery system. These, these are a new firm that we approved. This will be their second year of service to us. And their proposal, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Brownfield Environmental Engineering Resources in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the 2025 landfill two annual services. And this work is included in the proposed landfill budget, account number zero one five three thirty-five seventy-nine hundred. This cost will be split with, with Boone County. And in years past, traditionally, this cost has been in the forty-five to fifty thousand dollar range. So it does represent a cost savings this time around. And so far, we've been very pleased with the results we've gotten with Brownfield, so hopefully we'll, we'll continue that work.
Okay. All right, if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens. Yeah, I think it is good to point out that it is a, it is quite a significant cost savings by comparison to the fifty thousand or forty-nine thousand that we paid up to in the past. And that's a good thing, so. Not many times you see in this, in this economy that you pay less for something. Alderman Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Anderson, the county shares their liability side of this transaction with the city. Do they share any of the revenue from the solar power generation out there with the city to help defray any of this?
No, they do not. The, the county owns the property, proper. The city is the operator, licensed operator of the landfill site. When it was open and now that it's closed, we are unfortunately still the operator. The one benefit that we do get from having the solar on the site is we no longer have to take care of the cap. The cap has become the, the responsibility of the solar operator to maintain going forward. So that's, that's, that's huge. It's, it's, it's a good thing. It's one less thing off of our plate and one less expense that we have to incur to do that. So that is good for the city.
That's a good point because I was also going to make the observation that the hail storm does a lot of damage to those solar panels and creates an environmental catastrophe out there. The county will undoubtedly expect the city to help pay for the cleanup of that debris.
Well, I, you know, I think it is important to note that it is a cost sharing with the county, it seems to be, when it's convenient, in this case, there's revenue out there that's produced. Now, what's happening to it? We've, we've, that was a good point, Alderman Peterson, because the city has shared in the costs for the Leach Eight and for the environmental resources for years. How many years has this been going on, Brent? How many years? Thirty?
See, this site was closed, landfill number two was closed in nineteen ninety-three, if I remember correctly. So it's been going on for quite a while.
So thirty-two years, but, and then it's shared costs, but evidently not shared revenue, so I think that's important to note. Thank you. All right, we have that motion on the floor. If there's any other comments, any other questions, please feel free to ask. other questions, feel, please feel free to ask. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? All right. Motion passed, thank you. Director Anderson, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you. All right, item five, other unfinished business, we have none under item six, other new business, item A, uh, finance, safety, uh, finance director, safety and infrastructure grant. Ms. Turnipseed, good evening.
Good evening. As you are aware, the City of Belvidere applied for and has now been awarded the Safety and Infrastructure Director's Grant. This grant is for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and does not require any matching funds. Funds will be allocated as follows: Project One, the Belvidere Police Department, purchase of three Motorola APX N-seventy radios, twenty mini shields, and pepper balls for police officers, as well as a patrol car, computers, and installation of steel bollards. Project Two, the Belvidere Public Works Department will receive, um, the purchase of a flatbed trailer to transport concrete barriers, and the purchase of SCADA systems for lift stations. The recommended motion is a motion to accept the Safety and Infrastructure Director's Grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and authorize the mayor and finance director to execute documentation necessary to facilitate receipt of grant funds. These funds will be used as follows: For the Belvidere Police Department, purchase of three Motorola APX N-seventy radios, twenty mini shields, and pepper balls for the police officers, as well as a patrol car computers, and installation of steel bollards. For the police, for Public Works Department, purchase of a flatbed trailer to transport, transport concrete barriers, and the purchase of SCADA systems for lift stations.
All right, if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Um, I think it's, uh, a significant, um, amount of grant money, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and, um, they call it a director's grant, I had been in touch with, um, some of our state representatives in order to make sure that we did, uh, in, in get, receive some of this money for public safety, uh, certainly the bollards that we talk about go hand in hand with, um, I think we had purchased seventy of the, um, concrete barriers, uh, previously, and of course, the trailer makes sure that we don't have to rely on anybody else when we have an event and we want to close off and make the streets safe, so we don't have any issues where somebody enters the parade and we have a catastrophe. So we have done that, and we did receive this grant. The City of Belvidere goes out and does a lot of things in-house, and I want to thank, um, I want to thank the finance director and Chief Woody and Director Anderson both for identifying what, uh, how we're gonna use this money, and, uh, we'll go out and get it, and we have a lot of things that we would otherwise pass off to the, um, resident taxpayers, but in this case, uh, we did receive this grant and very proud of it, so, thank you. Uh, we have that motion on the floor, if there's any other questions, uh, any comments regarding the motion, feel free to ask. All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Director Turnipseed, appreciate it. Uh, we have item six B, uh, regarding from the police department, accept donation and approve canine purchase, and your packet is a memo from Chief Woody dated April fourteenth regarding, uh, accept donation and approve canine purchase. Chief Woody, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. So, uh, I present to you a request to accept a fifteen thousand dollar donation, uh, the donator's been a supporter of the canine program in the past, and once again, would like to offer her assistance, uh, to the Belvidere Police Department, the, in the city, by offering this donation. Uh, if approved, the police department intends to purchase a new police canine training and equipment from the King, King County Sheriff's Office, uh, in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, I would request a motion to accept the fifteen thousand dollar donation to the Belvidere Police Department, approve the payment of fifteen thousand five hundred to the King County Sheriff's Office for the purchase of a police canine training and equipment to be paid for from the fifteen thousand dollar donation, and five hundred dollars coming from the Belvidere Police Department K-9 line item.
All right, if I could have that motion, please. Motion by the woman, Gramkowski, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Um, well, Chief, that's a, certainly a s- very, very gracious donation, and, um, yeah, ver- very, very nice, and, uh, please convey that.
I will, Mayor.
All right, if there's any questions about the motion on the floor, Alderman Stevens?
I would really like to thank Jeannie Baker for this, she has supported our police department and stuff many times, and a lot of times, she's wanted to remain silent about this.
All right. Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? All right, and we have six C, again, police department, accept donation and authorize contract sale of canine Xylo, um, in your packet is a memo from Chief Woody, again dated April fourteenth regarding that, Chief?
Thank you again, Mayor. Uh, Belvidere Police Department removed canine Xylo from his previous handler in January of twenty twenty-five, uh, with the intent of reassigning him. The canine program identified the King County Sheriff's, uh, Canine Academy as a canine tra- academy, uh, training program with a stellar regional reputation. Uh, they thought that this would be a good training program for Xylo and his new handler. Uh, since Xylo was not a dog purchased from the academy, the master instructor wanted to test Xylo for competence, competency, prior to allowing our department to sign up for the training. Uh, once the testing was complete, the opinion of the master trainer was that Xylo, even with additional training, would not perform to the standards of the academy. The academy's, uh, master trainer said Xylo lacked the necessary drive, aggression performance, and consistency in narcotic detection, and therefore would not allow our department to attend training with our current canine. Since our last training, uh, training facility was no longer a viable option, uh, we're faced with finding a way to make the academy work, or do as other regional departments do and send their canine teams to either, uh, North Carolina, Ohio, Indiana, uh, to other reputable master trainers. Um, unfortunately, this option, when considering travel, officer compensation, meal allowance, room and board, would end up costing the department more time and the city more money. Uh, my recommendation, when weighing all the factors, would be to purchase a new police canine from the King County Sheriff, uh, Canine Academy, and, uh, in an attempt to find placement for Xylo, the, uh, canine, uh, cadre worked with the academy, FM canine, local canine trainers and handlers, to try and find a suitable buyer. Uh, the Boone County Crime Stoppers Board, uh, voted to accept a private thirty-five hundred dollar donation with the understanding that, uh, they would donate those funds to the Belvidere Police Department for the purchase of canine Xylo, with the intent that Xylo would be returned to his previous handler, Robert Kozlowski. Uh, just, uh, uh, just a reminder, uh, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, uh, the council approved to accept a fifteen thousand dollar donation, which paid for the purchase of Xylo as well as training. So I would request a motion to accept the thirty-five hundred dollar donation from the Boone County Crime Stoppers for the purchase of canine Xylo, and authorize the contract sale of Belvidere Police Canine Xylo to Robert Kozlowski.
All right, if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman, Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Um, any questions, any comments? Alderman Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, it seems like that probably is a good call for Xylo, because he's, what, four, gonna be four years old a- already, and then if he was gonna have to do some supplemental training out, out east, y- he probably wouldn't have that many years you could expect to get good service out of him.
You know, it, you never can tell, I know we've had, uh, canines in the past that have, uh, only been a couple of years old, that, uh, because working dogs tend to, uh, have so much, uh, wear and tear on their joints, um, you know, their, their knees go, and once one knee goes, the, uh, the other knee tends to go. Uh, a typical canine's usually good for six, seven years, uh, on the road, uh, so yeah, I mean, when you take all those things into consideration, plus the additional costs, and we're gonna have to send the, uh, the new handler to training anyway, so it's not like we could bring somebody in, and because Xylo's already trained, uh, there would be, uh, less cost there, unfortunately, when you get a new handler, uh, that handler and that, uh, canine have to be trained together, so they know, uh, kind of what to expect from one another, uh, so, uh, yeah, unfortunately, the, uh, the cost, uh, benefit would be limited, uh, but, uh, with the fact that, you know, uh, Xylo's not necessarily, um, the type of service dog that we would need, uh, yeah, that's, uh, kind of weighs into our recommendation at this point.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank, um, Officer Kozlowski for giving this dog a, a home, it can be safe and lifetime, I hope.
Yeah, there's no doubt that, uh, um, they are, uh, very eager to, uh, have the potential to take Xylo in.
All right. Okay, uh, we have that motion on, on the floor, if there's any other questions or comments, feel free to ask or comment. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Yeah, I think that's a win-win, Chief, thank you for your work on that, appreciate it, and also to, uh, Boone County Crime Stoppers, you bet.
Thanks, Mayor.
Uh, item D, uh, again, memo in your packet, police department purchase of a recruitment video in your packet, again, is a memo dated April fourteenth from Chief Woody regarding the purchase of a recruitment video, Chief?
Uh, with some assistance from Attorney Drella, uh, I have a, uh, real quick video here just to show you, uh, what we're looking to do, this is what brought our attention to this particular company, Cherry Valley Police Department, uh, utilized their services to develop their recruiting, uh, video, so if you don't mind. So, just a side note, uh, for those of you, which I think is all, for the most part, haven't been out to our range, it was, uh, showcased in that video, so I, I don't know if we can get royalties for that or not, but it'd be worth asking, maybe. So, uh, i- if you wouldn't mind, uh, turning to the memo in your packet, presented before you is an invoice for First In Studios, Inc., for the production of a Belvidere Police Department recruitment video. Uh, video's intended to tell the story of the Belvidere Police Department and its officers, uh, goals to increase visibility of the department to the community members, uh, organizations and prospective candidates. Uh, we're requesting to purchase one, one to two minute film, uh, and three fifteen to forty-five second social media reels. These videos can be used in conjunction with our currently, uh, grant-funded digital campaign, and gives us the flexibility of looking at alternative network media exposure as well. I'd request a motion to purchase the production of a recruitment video as outlined in the invoice from First In Studios, Inc., for four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to be paid for from the Belvidere Police Department Community Policing Line Item.
Okay, if I could have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you, thank you both. Any questions, any comments on the motion on the floor, feel free to ask? No, I, I do wanna, I do wanna say, Chief Woody, I appreciate it, I know how difficult it's been to get recruits, uh, and we've talked about that, and we even, we even took some steps here to make that easier, try to alleviate that, but if you don't market, which it is a competition, because there's a whole lot less, uh, a whole lot less to choose from, and so I appreciate you being proactive, uh, in regards to this, to make the Belvidere Police Department, which is a great department, and to, uh, market our department, market our city, our community, and, uh, I think it's a good move, so, thank you, appreciate it. Alderman Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, do, so that I understand that the second bullet means that there're gonna be three individual or three separate fifteen to forty-five second so- social media reels, so there'll be, uh, three, three unique different takes on the same effect, basically, or?
Yes, that's, uh, exactly correct. Um, uh, I'm learning that, uh, you want to, uh, consistently change the videos that people are seeing, and we have, uh, uh, data that shows us that when you change those videos, your viewership, uh, spikes, so, uh, the more you can do that, the more people that actually look at those videos, a- and the more interactions or engagement, uh, you can have with the community.
And then a, a follow-up, then, would, would this be something that, would, would you be getting together with your, your deputy chiefs to try to make, make sure that the, the copy that, that gets covered within these productions tend to cover what you guys think collectively keeps people from wanting to, to come here, you know, to keep good candidates away? But have you guys, have you guys thought that it's, you know, is it, is it the pay or is it the, the support of the, you know, the city fathers, or what, what do you think keeps the requisite number of people coming to Belvidere like what used to come to police departments not that long ago?
Yeah, and it's not just, uh, our department that is struggling to get, uh, new recruits, there's, uh, you know, a, a multitude of issues that we're having to tackle, you know, one of it, because things have gotten so competitive these days, a lot of departments' response is to increase pay, uh, some of it is to, uh, do justice, they, they market themselves, uh, more aggressively, you know, part of it is, uh, lateral officers that, you know, uh, departments can hire, and then because their pension is portable, and with tier two, they have to work longer, so ultimately, they're not really vested in a department for, uh, you know, a number of years later, so they can actually work for five, six, seven, eight, nine years with a department, and still go to another department and get their twenty and, and retire. So it's, uh, a number of factors that we're having to deal with, uh, if you talk to business owners, uh, a lot of them are struggling to, to get qualified applicants as well. We, we get, uh, a good number of people that apply, uh, unfortunately, you know, there's a, a good number that either can't pass the written test, uh, that don't, uh, make it through, uh, either the peer interview or another portion of the, the background process. So it, it's not just getting applicants, it's getting quality applicants, 'cause the other alternative is to lower our standards, which, uh, we're, we're not prepared to do.
Certainly, you know, you, you and the deputy chiefs would know more about how to, uh, you know, how to reel in a candidate, you know, mu- much more than what the First In Studios would, for su- for sure, I just was wondering what level of involvement you guys are gonna have in the finished product?
Complete, complete involvement, they're, uh, you know, they're not gonna put something out there with, uh, the Belvidere Police Department's, uh, name and logo, as well as representing the city, uh, that we're not going to approve of, and, you know, ultimately, we'll have, uh, right of refusal, uh, we're gonna be instrumental in letting them know what we want covered, and ultimately, what, uh, specialties we have, so, uh, they know that the different types of shots to get, and you saw, there's, uh, a, a bunch of different, uh, frames that showcased a bunch of different things for their department, we'd be looking to do something similar. Uh, Deputy Chief Smaha's the one that's spearheading this, uh, through our community policing program, uh, but, uh, we'll all have an involvement in it.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, uh, for Chief Woody on the motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Uh, last but not least, item six E, in your packet is an application for Belvidere Parade Permit, um... Last but not least, item six E. In your packet is an application for Belvidere Parade Permit, and that is for the Special Olympics Athlete Parade Request by the Belvidere Park District. This is an annual event. They assemble at what was the old Pacemaker parking lot, and then they travel down Sixth Street, and they end up at the community building. It's certainly nice for the public to turn out and support and law enforcement, and many other organizations are out in support of this. So if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Elder Woman Gramkowski, and a second by Elder Woman Frank, thank you both. It is, it is worthwhile, and it is, it is nice to see the public turn out and support these Special Olympians, and so if you get a chance on May first, starts at five-thirty, and starts out at Pacemaker, if you can find a spot along Pearl Street, that's usually where I go, and it's a nice opportunity to cheer them on and let them know we appreciate their accomplishment, so. Any questions, any comments? All right, we have that motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you, and that is all we have. Motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Elder Woman Frank, thank you both. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wants to stay? All right, for the record, we adjourned at seven ten P.M. Thank you, everybody, and have a good rest of your evening.